And then we're going to introduce you to our panel and get started. On the far end, we have Christine Gira, who's a Girls Point Public Schools teacher and educator, and she has been an advocate for public education and well-versed on our legislative issues and concerns, so we thank you for joining us today. Then we have my colleague, Representative Amanda Price, who is our House Education Committee Chairwoman. She serves as the Education Chair this session, this term. She was also the Local Government Chair last session where I served, so I had the opportunity of working with her. Even though she's on the other side of the aisle, she has a passion for education and kids, and I appreciate her for coming all the way here to Girls Point Woods from where she lives to be with us and to address some of the concerns that we have on this side of the state as it relates to education. So I think we need to give her a greater round of applause because of the drive that she made, as well as, she's here at her Democratic colleagues' town hall, so let's give her another round of applause. We have next, my superintendent, Todd Beeter Wolf of the Harper Woods School District, and he's no stranger to my town hall, so glad to have Todd Beeter Wolf from the Harper Woods School District. And then we have our state superintendent, Brian Wiston, who is newly appointed state superintendent, and he's here to give us the state's perspective as it relates to education, so we're glad to have Brian here joining us, and let's thank him for coming from Lansing. My colleague, Representative Sherri Gay-Danielgo, is en route. We have our Girls Point Superintendent Gary Nihas. He's new to the area, new to the district, and we thank him once again for his willingness to be a part, so let's give a round of applause to Gary. Next to him, we have Dan Quisenberry. Now, let me preface this by saying, I taught in public school and I taught in charter school. I understand there are some good charter schools, there are some bad charter schools, there are some good public schools and some bad public schools, but I thank Dan Quisenberry for coming on today and for his work that he does towards education, educating our kids, because all kids should have access to a quality education. And so, Dan, thank you for coming. And next to me is no stranger to Girls Point. He's a Girls Point Park resident. He's also the former Press Secretary for former Mayor Dennis Archer of the City of Detroit, and he's also a political and public relations consultant, Greg Bowen. You've heard him on the radio, so let's give it up to Greg Bowen, who will be working with me to moderate. All right, and so we're going to get started with our town hall, and Representative Gay Danielgo will be joining us shortly.
Okay, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Can you hear me? Awesome, welcome to this town hall meeting. We're going to just get a couple of ground rules here. The questions we would like, or the answers to the questions, we would like for you to try and wrap it up in two or three minutes. I know that the answers could require a longer explanation, and if so, we will come back to you later and give you an opportunity at the end. We will try and give everybody an opportunity to answer questions and be as fair as possible about it, and if someone would like to rebut a point that was made, please signify by raising your hand and letting me know, and you'll get a minute to do that. So, I'd like to start with the, some of the things about the new state standards for, that are being talked about here and being implemented. So, in November 2015, the State Board of Education adopted new science standards. In part, these new standards address science content, but also include cost-cutting ideas for multiple science disciplines and practices of science, such as investigation and data analysis, cross-cutting ideas. For the first time, the science standards also address engineering practices and design. Can you please comment on your thoughts about the implementation of these standards and of the standards themselves, and what are some of the hurdles that teachers may face with these new standards? We'll start with Christine, the teacher on the end there, and see what you have to say.
I have been a middle school science teacher for 20 years, and I've been getting training on the NGSS standards for the past couple of years. I spent this summer at Michigan Tech, working with them. They have some grant money to write a middle school curriculum with NGSS-aligned units that is Michigan-centric, so I've had some pretty in-depth experience with NGSS standards. I like them very much. I think they're powerful. They contain many of the things that used to be in our standards. We had the old Magocey standards and the grade-level content expectations over the past 20 years. And those standards would include the content, you know, the things that the kids are supposed to know, but also the things that they're supposed to be able to do, like ask questions, use models, develop hypotheses, analyze data. That was in the standards, but it wasn't really, they weren't really combined, so that teachers kind of could forget about all of those skills and just teach the content and feel pretty confident that they had covered what they needed to cover. NGSS requires teachers to integrate those skills. The way they're written, you can't teach the content without teaching the skills, and so that's going to require a fair amount of teacher training and probably some money for some new materials and things like that, but overall, I think the standards are very well-written, and we're going to be very happy with them.
And what are some of the challenges you think that teachers will face in trying to teach this way?
It's going to require whole-new ways of looking at our current curriculum. I was really happy to be involved with the Michigan Tech program, because they have a $5 million grant to rewrite middle school curriculum, and it's a pretty in-depth process. So one of the biggest challenges is going to be to just not fall back on doing what we've always done and just maybe tweaking things a little bit. We kind of have to start from ground level and really change how we think about how we teach science, and so that's going to require some money for teacher training. It's going to require money and time for teachers to rewrite curriculum, and it's probably going to require a fair number of new materials for us to implement in the classroom.
Well, let me ask the state superintendent, is the money and time there so that teachers can adopt these standards? Was that, do you think that it's possible?
Of course, the money and time isn't there. I mean, we never make this easy, right? But, you know, we go through a process of updating our standards on a regular cycle basis, and as we heard from our teacher, you know, these standards are written with the support and direction of teachers, educators, and experts, and so I think they are outstanding standards. But, you mentioned the problems whenever you adopt new standards. It is a change, so teachers do need to have professional development and time to do that. So certainly, as school districts, as they budget, they know these standards are changing and that they have to plan for and provide some professional development as part of that process. I think all of us would like to see more money and opportunities for when these kinds of changes happen, to be able to support districts, but that just hasn't been able to happen. But I think teachers are supporting these standards. They called for these standards and the changes, and now we just need to support those teachers in professional development so that they can implement them.
Well, Gary, as superintendent of the Girls Point School System, you're about to come up on budget negotiations. Looking at the budget, will you have room to put more money and maybe tweak the contracts to give teachers more time to implement the new standards that came down from the state?
One of the things I have grown to like immediately in Girls Point Public Schools is the factor that I think that we, our professional development and the way we've gone about providing professional development has given the Girls Point teachers at least the opportunity to be able to get in to do some of those things. We have late-start Mondays, we have professional learning communities, we also have professional days on, we've got one coming up on the 29th, we had one on November 3rd. We're allowing teachers at that point in time to choose a lot of their professional development for someone like Chris, who's gone outside and done extensive training. Chris is one of those that we call upon to help us train the trainer, kind of a process, and allow that to happen. I'm happy with the idea that we're moving in that direction. Time for us is not as big a factor as probably money, so when we look at new textbooks and new techniques and science equipment that's going to be needed inside the classroom, yeah, that's going to be a challenge to us, but it's also a priority, because we're at a point in time where we've made a change. And for us, in our district, to look at what STEM brings to us, and then also equally to look at where we're going to stack up in the ACT, now the SAT, and looking at those standards and where they are, it's to our advantage to try to make sure that we match up our curriculum, our standards, with that, because it's all about the kids and what the kids are going to learn and what they get from the increased next-gen standards that we put in place. So I look forward to the challenge of figuring out how we're going to pay for it, and then equally, how we're going to be able to implement it inside our districts.
Well, Todd, in Harper Woods, do you feel the same way?
So, you know, when I think about science, to me, science is the domain of innovation. It's the domain where we see our strongest career corrections, career connections. It's the domain where our students have to have their deepest understandings. And when I think about this transition to the next-generation standards, I'm reminded of my master's thesis. And, you know, in my master's thesis, I was expected to make an original contribution to the field in which I was studying, or that I was studying, if you will. And when I think about next-generation science, I might contextualize it in a broad context that way. It's the transition from asking our students to be able to understand science to asking our students to be able to do science in a way that will require some original thought for them to contribute to that concept of innovation. And so, do I think our students and our staff are capable of that? Absolutely, I do. But I really do believe that that's a big shift, and it is going to take time. It is going to take some of those things that we've talked about here, professional development for our teachers, as well as time for our students to understand, adapt to, and respond to those new expectations. So I do think it's going to be good for our state, but I certainly think that that transition's going to be a process and not an event.
So will you give, make tweaks to the schedule to allow teachers the opportunity to learn this material, and are you going to put money in the budget for them and the students to make this transition?
So, I mean, if we're going to meet the performance expectations that are outlined in the annual measurable attainment objectives, then obviously, if we're not going to invest, then we're not going to see the expected outcomes. And so, the direct answer to your question would be absolutely.
And we don't want to leave Dan out with the charter schools. How does this impact the charter schools?
Similar way. Charter schools are public in every way, so expected to meet the same kinds of standards, and I would obviously agree with all the good things that have been said here. Important to have good standards that are moving ahead and keeping pace with global competitiveness, et cetera. So, yeah, same struggles in terms of tight budgets, tight funding, and being able to implement things and do the training and preparation that's necessary. But, yeah, it'll be a great opportunity to move our education forward, and you'll see, a unique thing for charters is that sometimes you can create schools around things like this, so you may see an innovative school that really focuses and highlights on some of those new STEM ideas and to really drive into them. But, yeah, an important thing for Michigan to do, and it is a process.
Okay.
Well, thank you. Moving to the next question, but before we do, I just want to acknowledge Mr. Odell Tate from Mayor Mike Duggan's office. He's joined us. Let's give him a round of applause. Mr. Chris White, who's representing Senator Burt Johnson's office, is here. Let's give him a round of applause. And Chris Jansen, and another staffer who's representing our Congresswoman, Congresswoman Brenda Lawrence, her office is represented today by two of her staff. Let's give them a round of applause. We know she's probably in DC, fighting the good fight up in DC, so thank you all for joining us. And also, we have a good friend from Lansing, Attorney Tyrone Sanders, has joined us, so let's give him a round of applause as well. Moving to teacher evaluations. In November 2015, Governor Snyder signed into law Senate Bill 103, creating new rules for evaluating teacher performance. Among the changes are de-emphasizing student test scores and allowing districts more flexibility to choose their own evaluation tools. Under the new law, student growth will account for 25% of an evaluation for the next three years, and then 40% in the 2018, 2019 school year and beyond. Standardized test scores will account for only half of the student growth measurement. The rest will be based on local measures or assessments. What are your thoughts on these new standards? Let's start with Dan Quisenberry.
Yeah, another important change for Michigan to make, came out of, just as some background in the legislative process, teacher evaluation became a really important issue when the 10-year laws were changed. But any good school, these superintendents, I'm sure, and the teachers would all agree, if you've got a good school, you've got teachers getting feedback, and that comes through effective evaluation. So part of the challenge sometimes is that people aren't doing all the effective practices they need to. So important to have it in law and as an expectation, but one of the things we continued to describe as important in this process from a charter schools standpoint was the need to do it in a very flexible way, so that it wasn't prescribed exactly from Lansing. Expectations were set, standards were set, and that it was expected to be done, but schools would be allowed to use varying models as long as they were effective. And again, the real accountability will come in whether schools are performing or not.
All right, thank you. Given the fact that now we have school districts who have classroom crowding, we have classrooms of 50 students, 45 students, and teachers are still being evaluated on performance with 50 students in a class, so that information is sent to Lansing, and that information could possibly affect the teacher's job, having to teach oversized classrooms and having overcrowding. So I'm glad to have my colleague, Representative Gay Danielgo, who's a former DPS teacher, now in the legislature. I want to start with her. Do you think it's fair when a classroom is oversized, as well as a teacher is doing double duty and being evaluated, and that's potentially that teacher's job? And just because they have 50 students doesn't make them a bad or poor-performing teacher?
Absolutely. First of all, I just want to say thank you for inviting me to be a part of this panel. I'm happy to be here with a number of my colleagues, and I apologize for my tiredness on a radio interview with NPR New York regarding the issues that transpired today, but I just want to say that it's not often enough that Dan and I agree on things, so I just wanted to piggyback a little bit the comments that he made, and so I think that he really nailed it on talking about the level and the development of where teacher evaluation is, how it came about, and all great teachers. I'm a former science teacher with DPS. Great teachers don't shy away from evaluation. We want exemplary colleagues working right alongside us, so that when they got to my classrooms, 6th through 8th, that I could be confident that K through 5, their experience was good, and they were well-prepared to matriculate on through to high school. So it's not the evaluation piece, it is the how, and how that information is used. And if we use that to inform, and looking at the 10 top mission or objectives that are coming from our new state superintendent, I'm happy to see that's the direction in which he is endeavoring to go, to use that information to guide performance, not just to penalize teacher. But we have to look at the fact that all schools are not created equal. It's great to be here at Girls Point North High School, and, but we would like to see all schools have buildings and edifices like this, access to technology such as this, and for all schools to have manageable classrooms. And working in urban centers, you have to take into consideration that our teachers are dealing with oversized classrooms, as well as, in some instances, the lack of necessary technology and access to working technology and the Wi-Fi systems that are available, and then also the impact of poverty. So how do we level the playing field to make sure that we're measuring apples-to-apples, not apples-to-oranges, or apples-to-lemons? And that's what our teachers in our urban settings are getting in a lot of instances. You're not, we're not looking at the impact of poverty, we're not looking at the impact of not having the ready resources and technology, and so if they are evaluated on the same metrics, that districts that have that access to technology, then no, it's not fair. So I don't want, I don't want the narrative to be that testing or evaluating is not fair, but if we're not on an equal playing field, then it's not fair. And so that's what we, as educators, are calling for, an equal playing field.
Thank you. Let's go to the other teacher, let's go to the other teacher on the panel. Christine, what have you seen as it relates to teacher evaluations and being a science teacher? We have two science teachers on the panel.
Not of science.
Is it, is it a good thing? Does it need some improvement, you know?
Well, as a science teacher, I understand the influence of uncontrolled variables, and as a math teacher, I understand some statistics. And I have to tell you that including test scores in teacher evaluations is not supportable scientifically or mathematically. The American Statistical Association even came out with a statement a few months ago that using VAM, which is Value Added Metrics, which is a little more fancy than Michigan even uses, we just use flat-out test scores, is not statistically supportable. A teacher has 14% or less effect on student test scores. That leaves 86% uncontrolled variables. And so you may have noticed that the Every Student Succeeds Act, the federal government just passed a few weeks ago, dropped the requirement for student test scores to be used in evaluating teachers, and I believe that's hopefully as a result of them beginning to understand a little math. And I'm sorry that Michigan just passed their law, and it does still include test scores. I'm happy, obviously, that it's a smaller percentage than before, but there's still no real good mathematical or scientific reason to include test scores in teacher evaluations.
Thank you. Now, let's hear from my colleague, Amanda Price, Representative Price, as the House Education Chairwoman. When the bill was introduced and passed, how much of teachers' voice was put into the legislation, and what have you heard as a result of implementing that from teachers and from administrators or parents as well?
Well, I think, excuse me, it's important to remember that this bill was not just introduced last year and passed last year. It was three years in the work. So Representative Zemke was here, and Representative O'Brien worked extensively on it in the preceding two years, or Senator Pavlo introduced it last year. And so I know for a fact that Representative Zemke and O'Brien heard from many, many teachers. They took an extensive period of time to understand this process and craft this legislation with that input in mind. And so, first of all, I want to say thank you to them, because that was, that was one of the heavier lifts we've seen in education in a long time. But one of the things I appreciate about the way it came out was the flexibility that it affords local school districts for the choice in the evaluation tool, but also how they're going to evaluate teachers and how they're going to weight things. And so I'm pleased with the legislation, I'm pleased that it's done. I think when it did finally pass and get signed into law, we maybe heard a sigh of relief across the state, that yes, it's finally done, and it has maybe more of a roll-out timeframe than some people were expecting.
All right, thank you. Todd, what have you heard from teachers in your building in Harper Woods School District as it relates to teacher evaluations? Do they feel threatened, that this is a way to, you know, reprimand them? Do they feel like they have the adequate resources to do their job as an educator? What have you heard?
Well, I think that there is concern in the educational industry. You know, while this has been on the books for a short number of years, and we've been moving toward a higher level of accountability, if you will, certainly to Ms. Grier's point, you know, there is concern that, you know, there are unequal learning circumstances across districts, within districts, and even within a school. Teacher who is teaching an honors course compared with a teacher who is teaching a special education population, for example, how do we balance that, and how do we equalize it, and how do we create a structure whereby every teacher has a fair opportunity to be successful with themselves professionally and with their students, and that no teacher is disadvantaged? But I would disagree that it can't be done. As a math teacher myself, I would certainly take the position that a fair and adaptable and transferable model can be adopted. Certainly, I would echo Representative Diagnatto's, you know, comments that, you know, there are intervening factors, such as the percentage of poverty students and so forth in the classroom, but there are methodologies that are being used in other states that I think are better than the Michigan model. Will there be a perfect answer? Probably not. But there is a concept out there in which you base that evaluation using a metric called the student growth percentile, and the simple concept is, is that it prepares, it compares every student within a classroom, not to his or herself, as has been our standard in our state, but rather to their academic peers. Students who have performed at a level comparable to theirs in previous years, and then uses a mathematical algorithm to identify the amount of student growth that that particular student has attained. So I think we still need work in the methodology, but I do think that as a profession, there should be one, and I think there can be a fair one.
Thank you very much. Representative Price?
Can I mention too, as we were going through this process of developing this legislation and taking testimony, I think it's really important to note that teacher evaluations, at least from my perspective, and I think throughout the education community, is a way for teachers to grow and not be punished. It's a way to identify what they may need work on, or what they're doing particularly well, and build on those things, and not use it as a way to punish somebody or hold them back, you know?
All right, thank you. Christine, you had your hand up.
I would agree with Representative Price that especially the Danielson and Marzano models are growth models, they're formative types of assessments. However, Michigan law now requires staff layoffs based on evaluations, and so they've taken that formative, "we just want to help you get better" model, and they've made it a, "we're going to tally it up at the end of the year, we're going to rank and sort, and some of you are going to lose your jobs" model. And so we've really changed the whole tenor of the conversation. It's nice to say it's about growth and everybody wants to improve, but at the end of the day, everyone really wants to keep their job.
Absolutely, and our...
Good point.
Very good, very good point. Our last comment on this section is Representative Danielgo.
Well, I think Christine just pretty much encapsulated what I wanted to say, but I wanted to say, although I wasn't there when this was introduced during the first, the time it was introduced in the last legislature, I will say this is one of the times that there was a beginning of bringing in teacher voice. Was it perfect? No. But did it reflect a willingness to at least hear from those who are in the trenches every day? And that's what I would like to see expanded. Far too often, the laws that are made impacting our classroom, impacting our profession, and what is done in the most professional way does not include those who are in the classrooms experiencing what's the obstacles and the hurdles to delivering exemplary education. And so I would like to see our educational laws make sure that we open up in a way that find a way to get teacher voice involved before we impose additional mandates that put teachers in this place where they are fearing for their jobs and not teaching in the way that we desired to do when we first got our teaching certification.
Thank you so much, Representative. Representative Zemke, who's on our front row, has also advised that there were over 100 teachers consulted and a dozen or so administrators consulted and spoken with to craft the evaluation law. In addition, the evaluation law is written in a manner that to prevent the MDE from comparing or ranking teacher evaluation scores. So I think the law that was created, as Representative Danielgo said, there was some good in it, but in any legislation, once it's implemented, we need to go back and revisit it to see what needs to be tweaked and what needs to be improved. I think that's a fair statement. As we move forward, and I see Gary's hand, give me one second, I do want to acknowledge Representative, my colleague and my Girls Point sharing colleague, we share the points, Representative Alberta Tinsley-Talabi is here. Let's give her a round of applause. And I did see, joining us, we have Judge Elanice Bryant Weeks, Judge Elanice Bryant Weeks from the 36th District Court. She's here, let's give her a round of applause. And Judge Adrian Hightnite Johnson from 36th District Court. And we also have some representatives from the MEA and from AFT Michigan, so let's give them a round of applause as well. And Gary has the last say on this section.
I want, I don't want to speak for Brian, but one of the things that I have talked to Brian about is the factor that I also believe that we need to look at the M-step. And when we look at the M-step as the measuring tool, it's not, we're not into it far enough to understand it, one, and two, it's not well-written at this point in time. What we face this spring is a different, potentially a different test, so we're going to compare scores with a test that I don't think is our best measure at this point in time. And I would talk to Brian about NWA as a potential to... And I would talk to Brian about NWA as a potential to take over for the M-step, because I think it's got the research base behind it, it's got a lot of opportunities for us to compare year to year, and it's not being rewritten continually by either, it's an outside source, it's reliable, it's well-researched, and it's one that I think provides a better standard for where we are with growth. I also would like to step on one of the other comments made, and I think it's Todd started it. Really honestly, what we want in our education system is one-year's growth for every student. And so, we're looking for one-year's growth from wherever they are to wherever they need to be. But the one-year growth piece becomes one of those issues, if someone ever falls behind, then it's difficult to keep. But if we measured them for a year's growth, and we took a percentage of the year growth, it would make a whole lot more sense to me that then teachers knew that they had to make that one-year's growth wherever the student entered, or wherever the student was whenever they entered the classroom.
Thank you. Also, I would like to acknowledge the Honorable Lamar Lemons, Detroit Public School Board Member. Let's give him a round of applause. And former state representative as well, you can, please join us down here where our elected officials are, as well as I saw Detroit Public School Board Member Tawana Simpson. Let's give her a round of applause. And feel free to join us down here if you desire. And any other school board members, if, I can't see, it's kind of dark out there, so please forgive me, if anyone else is here, thank you.
Thank you. My question is this, a couple of years ago, Governor Snyder had floated the idea of basically dropping all the borders between schools and just having open borders wherever you lived in the state. That didn't happen, it caused a little mini-revolution amongst some parent groups here and other places, but it did raise the question about the way that school districts are funded, and the need to maybe revisit and revamp the way school districts are funded. Do you see a time where the state will go to an open-border kind of formula for students? And I might as well ask the question, do you ever think that there will be a charter school in Gross Point and in Harper Woods?
Harper Woods is an easy question to answer. We have multiple charter schools within our district boundaries already.
I don't know that we're in a position where we, at this point in time, can look at a charter school and say it fits in within the Gross Point Public School District, but I would tell you that I have, and my previous job had a charter school. And relationships with charters are different from state to state and different circumstances. It's in our, it's in our advantage right now to keep what we got and do what we got, with what we got. And honestly, I'm not sure there's a place for it, or otherwise, they would have been here. They would have been competing in our district long before now, but I'm not so sure that that was the venue that they chose to pick up and be able to have students come from our district into theirs.
Gotcha. Do you think that there will ever be an open-border policy around the state? Do you think that the time has come for that? And we'll just go down the road and answer yes or no, and tell us why.
I'm hearing two questions in there. If I can edit that a little bit, the first part is the funding question that we feel very strongly about, when we created the opportunity back in 1993, 94, for choice, not just charter schools, but inter-district choice as it exists today. We also funded kids on a per-pupil basis, not institutions, but kids. And then, we gave the authority basically to parents to distribute that money, based on the choice law. So, you can go to a school within your district or two districts that abut you, it's not full, as you say, walls down, but... So, the funding part is really important, I think, for Michigan to stay on the path of per-pupil funding and looking at that and making sure all kids are funded on an equitable basis, shouldn't matter if you cross the street or across the state, our kids should be worth the same amount of money. Maybe with exceptions for need like special ed and poverty and things where we know educational demand is higher, or educational needs are higher. In terms of the choice, yeah, I think we need to get not lost in some of the rules and regulations, and really look at, are we creating a response to need and demand? Some cases, you know, I think parents do feel locked and trapped, and we ought to make sure we're responding in some fashion, whether it's opening schools where they live or where they want to be. I don't see a lot of that in most places around the state. The charter growth has been really moderate and slow, but at different times, I think we need to be paying more attention. And, Dan, what are you talking about? There's been places in the last few years where districts in real distress, and I'm not talking about Detroit here, we probably should have gotten involved earlier and sooner and made sure parents had real options where they lived and wanted to be.
Well, let me follow up with that, because it doesn't seem exactly right when you say that the money follows the kid, but it follows the kid within the district, and so, the competition doesn't necessarily cross districts. So, the funding, while formula follows the kid, that there's no real, there's not much opportunity for competition between school districts for those kids. Gross Point has a closed district. You know, there, I think Birmingham, I don't know, there are a couple of other districts out there that are still closed. And so...
Yeah, I'm speaking to the places that do exist under current law, so if...
Do you ever envision...
I live in the Lansing area, and there's a lot of choice and competition there.
Do you ever envision the borders dropping?
I think when the need is there, it will, yes.
Yeah. Gary, do you ever envision the borders dropping?
I don't, I don't see the borders dropping. I think, I like the opportunity that we have now to make choice. I mean, our local community gets to make a choice, our board gets to make that decision, and it gives us the opportunity to open if we need or want to. At this point in time, our board and community have said, "No, we don't want to open," and we're happy with what we've got here. We lose students to charters, we lose students to parochial and private schools, but we also compete with those to be able to keep our kids here and keep the best education available to the residents here in Gross Point.
State Rep, Sherry, do you ever see the borders dropping?
No, no, no. We know where charter schools typically set up camp, in urban districts. And the choice has not been a choice, it's certainly not a fair choice, it's not an effective choice, because many of the charter schools are not performing at the level in which they should, and so, many of them should be closed.
The question is, the question is, do you see school districts' borders dropping, period? Where you could just go wherever you want to go?
No, I do not see that. First of all, the model of having neighborhood schools is a good thing. I remember living on Burlingame on the northwest side of Detroit and walking to my school. I remember having enough time, if I wanted to, to walk home for lunch, and to be able to get back to school and have all of the supporting community members who were there to protect and to support the goal of education in our community. But that choice has been taken away, especially in the city of Detroit. We've had more school closures than the history of any other governor in the state of Michigan under our current governor. And so, that collapse has created domino effect, where people have come up with this narrative, especially the media, that says parents are voting by their feet. That's a lie. They're voting based on the restricted choice that's been given to them, and that's what the overgrowth of charters within urban centers, especially since the releasing of the cap in 2011. So, no, the borders will not drop. I like neighborhood schools, but I feel sad for Inkster and Buena Vista, Saginaw, for districts whose schools were dissolved and closed, Highland Park. I feel sorry for that, and we need to make sure that we look at the impact and the overgrowth of charters in urban districts, and the impact that they are having on their financial budgets, and the deficits that they are helping to create without adequate choice. So, if you want to give choice, let it be real choice, fair choice, and effective choice. Right now, it's not. And so, no, I don't see the walls dropping.
Sherry, the Detroit school system allows other kids from other districts to come.
But, but are we going to...
So, my question, my question is, Detroit has an open district policy.
Detroit does.
Do you see, yes, do you see their kids from Gross Point that go to Cass, that go to Renaissance?
I got that. But do I see other districts?
Okay, so do you see... Right. Does the state have an appetite for that? I'm asking.
The state is going to respond to its citizens, okay? And at least their citizens in Gross Point, in West Bloomfield, in Troy. And so, no, they are not going to drop the walls and to allow students to come from all of... Think about why Pontiac got the consent agreement that it did, was to ensure that children within the Pontiac School District did not go around to the other surrounding districts. Well, that's the only difference between Detroit and Pontiac, don't allow those kids to go to the other districts.
What do you think, Brian, from the state superintendent's point of view? Should the state, or do you ever envision a time where the state will erase the borders and allow kids to go wherever they want?
No, I don't see that happening. The second part of your question dealt with school funding, and the legislature has commissioned a study to look at school funding. I put a committee together to look at school funding. We need to change the way we're funding our schools.
Yes.
And so, we'll have recommendations on how to do that.
Absolutely. Todd?
So, I think from the perspective of the Harper Woods Schools Board of Education, if you will, I think that they would suggest that, you know, city governments and township governments and county governments and state governments exist for a reason, but certain governmental structures can and should occur on the local level, and I think that community-based school districts are certainly an example of that. I think that our parents, right now, have many enrollment opportunities across our state. I think our school, I think our school of choice structure currently is pretty well-defined and working appropriately. A community can choose to not participate, they can choose to participate in a limited capacity, or they can choose to participate in an unlimited capacity. And I would echo Superintendent Nahaus's comments in Harper Woods, we're losing students to Detroit Public Schools, we're gaining students from Detroit Public Schools, we're losing students to East Detroit and gaining students, and to me, it's about local control and it's about parental determination within defined structures. I think we have a pretty good platform currently.
I guess that gets to the heart of the question, in that you have some school districts like Detroit, like Harper Woods, that have to compete across district boundaries, while other school districts don't. And so...
Half to are choosing to. In the case of the Harper Woods Schools Board of Education, we're choosing to, as is the Detroit Public Schools Board of Education, based upon the comments that I've heard here, or the governmental structure.
Right. State Representative, what do you think? Will the state have an appetite for just wiping off the borders?
No, and I think primarily because parents identify with their school district. For more than, I mean, I'm, I'll show my Michigan map, I'm from over here in Holland, and more than anything, you don't identify by the unit of government you live in, but by the school district your children attend. And so, I think there is ownership to that, and I don't think they'll go away. I could see, you know, maybe in the distant future, 10, 15 years, maybe county-wide school districts, but that would be maybe done for cost savings, I don't know. But that is so far out of the loop that I don't think it's going to have legs for a long time.
Sure. And finally, Christine, do you see it happening?
I think the problems that we are dealing with, with the EAA and DPS right now, are directly a result of lack of input and ownership and pride from the community. And I think whenever we take away the ability of a community to nurture and govern their own school district, that we do not end up where we want to be. We've had school choice and charters for 20 years in this state, and I don't think we could say that we are in a better spot now than we were 20 years ago. I'm not sure that's the solution.
And we'll let Dan, he had one more, have the last word here.
The facts are, if we want to look at data like we were talking about with teacher evaluation, 70 to 80% of the population in this state, depending on how you measure it, would disagree with the comments that are being made. They want more choice, not less. The data will tell you that they actually think charter schools improve public education and provide a more unique, student-tailored education. And 70% of the charter schools that are in the city of Detroit are locally controlled. These are Detroiters who open their schools.
Okay, folks, let's have, let's be a little respectful for the people that are trying to listen.
Are local Detroiters who have opened charter schools and are running charter schools to serve children in the city of Detroit. In terms of performance, Representative Dignago mentioned that they're not performing. Research shows you that three months of education more per year comes out of a charter school, so they are performing very well and they're serving the students. The fact is, 70,000 kids have left the city of Detroit and aren't attending either Detroit Public or a charter school. The key is, why did that happen? Absolutely. And why aren't we offering more quality schools in the city for people that want to come and reside there?
So, let me say this. I represent probably the most diverse district in the state of Michigan. I have Gross Point Woods, Gross Point Shores, Harper Woods, and the city of Detroit. I have charter schools, I have DPS, I have Harper Woods, Gross Point, University Liggett, and a plethora of other schools here in my district. What I find amazing is, we talk about local control, and you've just said that, Dan, but when I come to a Gross Point school board meeting, their residents have a voice, and they have local control here. When I go to Harper Woods school board meetings, their residents have a voice. But when I go to the Detroit Public Schools, we have an elected school board that don't have any power. We have an elected school board that's been elected by the citizens of the city of Detroit with no power. However, the citizens, the taxpayers, the parents, their voice has been submerged under the emergency manager's voice and under the governor's voice. So, I think if we're going to talk about local control, what's good for the goose is good for the gander. And if it's good here, Harper Woods is good in Detroit, too. Because I believe that every child deserves and should have an opportunity for a quality education, regardless of where they live and their skin color. And unfortunately, that's not the world we live in right now. And so, with Mother Moore? All right, Mother Moore? All right, Mother Moore? At the, at the end of the day, we got to be fair about this process. How is it the largest city in the state of Michigan? All of the democracy has been taken away. The largest city in the state of Michigan, you know, we've had emergency manager over the city, emergency manager now for 12, 14 years over the school district, if not more, you know, we've got to change that dialogue, we've got to change that conversation, because at the end of the day, it's not equal. It's not equal. And you're looking at someone who's a product of DPS, and now who's in the legislature who understands this. So, as we talk about local control, let's remember, local control ain't local everywhere. You know, the legislature has invoked and put, and placed control over the largest city in every way we can. And what appalls me is, folks that don't live it every day are the ones making the laws to change the city of Detroit. And let me put this disclaimer out there, for those who don't know, I've taught in DPS and I've taught in a charter school. So, I know what goes on in both. But we got to be fair about this moving forward, and we're going to move a little to the next question. I do want to acknowledge Linda Wesley from Detroit City Council President, Brenda Jones' As we, as we look at, let me ask this again now, we're about to move forward in a very sensitive conversation. Let's be respectful. And many of you know I don't have a problem with removing you, okay? In Detroit Public Schools, my very first year in the legislature, there was a piece of legislation that came out called the Education Achievement Authority. And the EAA was originally drafted to deal with the bottom 5% of failing schools in Michigan, at the time, which was 138 schools. How ironic, 15 schools from Detroit Public Schools were placed in the EAA. We've seen the EAA use our students as guinea pigs, we've seen test scores to drop, we've seen high turnover of non-certified, non-equipped teachers, we've seen safety concerns in those schools, and now we see recently in the news that the EAA is under federal investigation and being levied for corruption. With the EAA having such a disaster out the gate, what are the best steps to address the problem? And what are we going to do to make sure that those kids that are trapped in the EAA have access to a good quality education? I'm going to start with my colleague, Representative Price.
Oh, thank you. And I will tell you that I have visited a number of the EAA schools, and, well, some of what you say may be true, I do know that the schools that I visited were in very bad shape when they were taken over by the EAA. over by the EAA. And so steps forward, I think, are looking at education in total. All students, like you said, Brian, need to be, have a very quality education. And I'm actually quite upset by the MSEP scores out of Detroit Public Schools in general, out of the EAA schools. And so it's not, I don't necessarily differentiate between EAA and DPS.
Why don't you?
Because I think all students deserve a really quality education. And the test scores that I see coming out of either organization are not where they need to be.
Well, let me say this, and first before I say this, I do want to acknowledge my House Democratic Leader, Representative Tim Grimaldi, who's in the House, our Democratic Leader of the House of Representatives. Thank you. Let me say this. 15 schools were taken away from DPS and placed in the EAA, a separate school district. So at some point, we've got to hold the EAA accountable for what they've done, the progress that they've made. What we're not going to do is play this flip-flop game that they came from DPS, so we're going to lump DPS and EAA together. It's two districts. And so we need to look at, when I looked at the test scores, EAA is at the bottom. And I have an EAA school in my district, which I attend quite frequently. I also have gone on the tours, and it's easy for anybody to put on a dog and pony show when they know they have guests coming. But I've gone out and put a hoodie and some jogging pants on and visited a number of EAA schools and didn't tell them who I was. And saw the classroom management issues, and saw the security issues, and saw the teachers not being prepared and not being equipped. So this is what we live every day, not just on a tour. So I don't want to hear EAA and Detroit lumping them together. That's not fair to DPS, because we took the schools from them. And then it's not fair to DPS to be held accountable for what the EAA has done. Representative Danielgo, as it relates to the EAA, what needs to happen, in your view, as it relates to those schools?
Well, there's no other answer but to dissolve this experiment, this separate, this separate and unequal experiment. You know, being a new member in the legislature, getting to know and build relationships with a number of people who I believe, in a lot of instances, have the right intent, but lack the understanding of the various districts in which their laws are imposed on. And if you come, and I'm not going, I want you to hear me, understand me well, I think it's institutional racism that oftentimes prevent the ability to understand and see people differently. And so if you come to the table believing that African-Americans are less than adequate, unable to govern themselves, have no value, and need a savior, then you create these type of competing entities in laws that would suggest that at least I'm going to do better than you're doing. And so that's why we've been under state control for so long. But we're not looking at the data to show that that hasn't worked. We look at the EAA, and the data that was produced by Professor Thomas Pedroni from Wayne State University showed that the trajectory of the scores of the students' performance at EAA went backwards. And to see that, and still to hold on to that, when it started, taking those schools that were paid for by taxpayers' dollars, passing proposal S, having to pay for those schools into 2035 on our tax rolls is taxation without representation. But to take some of the best buildings, Mumford, that was built, $35 million, and to lease that building for a dollar, and then from my understanding, we're still investigating, trying to wait even for information to show, they haven't even paid their rent. So they superimpose a separate competing entity that is using a software system as beta testing on our children, and then they hire marketing firms to market it, not only to children that they say were persistently low-performing, but to students all over the city of Detroit. So the intent was to take students away from DPS. The only outrage came is when the letters went to Harper Woods, and to Huntington Woods, and to Royal Oak. The rest of those districts said, hell, no. You're not bringing that mess out here, and you're not taking our children there. But it hasn't worked. The only solution, prior to, before the investigation, dissolve this and allow Detroiters, very capable academicians, to lead our district without state control, and then we can repair what's been done and improve academic achievement in our schools.
Thank you. I think it's also worth pointing out, and this came from Detroit School Board Member Lamar Lemons, you know, let's be honest, those schools were failing under state control when they were DPS. But it was the state failing them then, and it's the state controlling and failing them now, because the state created EAA. And we have an office, which is called the State School Reform Office. And that office, we've funded, and we've given six-figure salaries to people to come and reform our low-performing schools. But last year and the year before, not one school was placed in that office. But we have 138 schools that are failing at the bottom 5%. We have a state school reform office. Not one school. Unacceptable. And I have, I serve on House Appropriations, Department of Ed, and we have drilled and drilled and drilled. And so I'm glad my colleague is here, who is the Education Committee Chairwoman, so she can understand some of our frustration. That department never put a school in that, and that's unacceptable. So DPS was the only people that were failing. But when I checked the list, let's be fair, Harper Woods was on that list. And in fairness, Harper Woods did improve in many of the areas, but they were on that list. So why wasn't a Harper Woods school put in the state school reform office? You know, why wasn't some of the other school districts? So that's something we need to look at to be fair. While we're on Harper Woods, I do want to acknowledge Harper Woods City Councilwoman, Valerie Kendall, who's here. Let's give her a round of applause. I can't see her, but I got a note that she's here. All right, and we're going to move on to the next segment, and we need to kind of, we need to move a little quick, because we have a school board meeting tonight.
There is a two-minute reminder, Sherry.
One minute.
You weren't here when we laid down that rule, but just so you know. There is, we were talking about competition. Detroit seems to be getting a lot of competition from a lot of different sources to its traditional public school system. So you have the EAA, you have charter schools and the growth. Harper Woods has some competition as well. But the state has introduced another element of competition, and that's cyber schooling and homeschooling, to the point where they advertise pretty aggressively about the cyber schools. Can you tell us, what do you think the impact on this cyber schooling, the growth in cyber schooling will be? And given the kinds of horror stories that we've heard about homeschooling, you might recall some children who were unfortunately, were unfortunately the victim of homicide, murder, and the state never knew anything about it, and it's because they were homeschooled and they were just dropped off the radar. So it's a two-part question. The, do we need to, do you see, Dan, competition, more competition coming from cyber schools? And do we need to revamp homeschooling laws?
Two big, different questions, in my opinion. The first one, on cyber education, that's a spectrum. So if you go back to one of the first questions we had about science standards and STEM, one of the things we really do need to do as a state is to implement innovative ways of delivering education. And for a small percentage of kids, fully online is that way. Think of homebound students who are legitimately disabled or something, or maybe kids that just express themselves differently. Online, full online learning is an appropriate way for some kids. I don't think it'll ever be more than some point percent of kids in the state. You get into blended learning and other kinds of online, I think it's a very powerful tool that educators, many of here in the room and sitting on the panel, will develop ways of really getting effective education. So that piece of it, it's an effective strategy. We need to find its appropriate place and make sure there's accountability for. In terms of homeschooling laws, I think what you're asking for is really, are we monitoring, do we have enough data about kids? Well, that's a really sensitive question. I mean, you're asking pieces of it with horror stories in mind, and none of us want those things. But there's also a lot of pushback from parents, the public, around, you're not coming after my data. You know, think Common Core and testing and data that's available to the feds, et cetera. So where is that balance? That's something a policy I haven't started to discuss yet. Yes, we need information about our children. Yes, we need to protect our children in many ways. So I'm not sure we've even started to have that conversation.
Well, you said about 1%, but it's becoming more and more of an option for kids, wherever they live, to simply drop out of school and say that they are doing the online thing. So not, they don't have a broken leg, they don't have any, you know, they're just tired of going to class in that kind of way.
If it's a public school, a cyber school, then those records are available, they're registering. And there are very effective programs here in the metro area for credit recovery, places where kids have very flexible needs, whether it's something's happened in their life. And if you're in a traditional system, you run out of time. They're not going to allow you to vary your schedule so you can really get things done on schedule. Or an online program, you can, you can be self-paced, and they're very effective.
So you have not seen kids just, I guess the thing about it is that we talk about the school-to-prison pipeline that happens, and the cyber schooling seems to be another way for kids to sort of get lost in the radar, you know?
They can, they certainly can.
Have you seen that? Have you seen kids just fall off the radar and say they're going to cyber school? And that's got to hurt your bottom line.
I don't know, again, I would try to separate those. If we're thinking about, is online or cyber schooling effective? I think we have to say yes, it's a strategy we need to look at. And I don't think kids falling through the cracks is just a cyber school issue. At any given day, I'm not sure I know the statistics, some of you may, but it's something like 20,000 children in this state aren't registered anywhere, and they're not being homeschooled, or nothing, right? That's all kinds of schools. So do we need to do a better job of making sure we're aware of where kids are and they're in schools? Absolutely. It's going to be a challenge, because there's also a lot of sensitivity to private information being shared publicly, and that, too, can be abused.
Gary, do you see cyber schooling being another avenue of competition for the traditional public schools?
I'm going to change the topic to, one of my favorite pet peeves. So I'm going to take my full two minutes here.
Okay, I'll start the clip.
I really don't like the factor that we believe that every child in the state of Michigan in the United States has to sit in a classroom for 16 weeks for one semester in order to gain the material and/or the skill set to be able to do that. There has to become a way that we measure students' abilities by either a certificate or by some form of documentation that says they have mastered that. So if a student in the freshman year is sitting in an Algebra I class, and they can literally pass the competency test, whatever that might be, could be an AP exam, as we know or are more familiar with, or it could be the CLIP test that we give when you go to the universities. The idea is, why do they have to then sit there the rest of that 16 weeks, and then the following 16 weeks? Because they've already mastered it, say, first quarter, or they've already mastered by semester. We've got a system in place that basically is paying us for the time that the kids sit in the seat. And we need to change it from the time they sit in the seat to the amount of knowledge and skills and abilities that they bring with their certificate. And so what we need is stackable credentials that come with me, to you, as an employer or as a college. I've got a stackable set of credentials that I come with. I'm qualified, and I have that. The other point of it is, there are some kids that can potentially get out of high school in two years, three years. There's others that's going to take five years. And yet we have this, everybody has to go to school for four years, they have to go for 16 weeks each semester, they have to spend six-plus hours with us every day. And the idea is, that's an adequate system. The cyber system we have in place could be used in a format and way that we could proficiency, certificate, bill credentials for students, so that we can move them along the way. They can stay challenged, and they can stay focused, and they can work towards career or career opportunities that are given to them. The workforce development that we need to have in Michigan is still within the schools, still within the kids, still within the possibilities. We have to work the workforce development, the economic development, in a stackable credential format, so their employers know what they're getting when they walk in the front door.
Thank you. That's all the time we have on that one. Brian, you want to get to the audience?
Yeah, so what we're going to do is, we have a segment I want to go to, because we need to be out in about 35 minutes, because there's a school board meeting, and I do not want them to not invite me to come back and have something here, so we're going to honor that. I also want to acknowledge the arrival of, I also want to acknowledge the arrival of Gross Point School Board President Judy Gaffa. Let's recognize her and give her... Judy Gaffa, I'm sorry. What did I say?
Gaffa.
I said Gaffa. I said Gaffa. That's my constituent, I know. But I want to go back and let the state superintendent answer that question quickly.
Just real quick, because I haven't had a chance to answer too many questions, and I think there's some audience members thinking I want to answer.
Oh, you've got some questions here, though.
Let me just say very quickly, I agree with Gary very much so, that we need to move to an educational system where parents and educators are sitting down and designing plans for to meet the needs of the students and not us adults. So I think that's important. I think homeschooling, there are some homeschoolers that are doing an outstanding job, and they should be allowed to do that. But I was in charge of truancy for Oakland County, and many times, a student would be in a traditional school, disappear, we'd go check on them, they claimed homeschooling, and therefore, the courts wouldn't look at them. So we do have to look at how homeschooling is done. We need some sort of check to make sure true homeschooling is being done, and if it is, leave them alone. But if it's being used to avoid schooling, then we need to do something. EAA has not worked, we need to eliminate it, we need to return, we need to return to an elected school board in Detroit. Every citizen should have a voice. But we also do need to have an open conversation, that there are many students around this state, not just in Detroit, but around this state, that are not getting the education they need, and that's in traditional schools, and that's in charter schools. And someday, I hope we can have an honest conversation about how we, as adults, are failing those kids, and we have an obligation to come up with a solution, so that each child has an opportunity to be successful and not be dependent on where you live.
Very good. So we're going to go and ask a couple of questions that came from the audience, and then we're going to go into a very hot topic right now.
Brian, if I may?
Oh, yes, sir.
I just think in the spirit of transparency, it is important that the audience know that Harper Woods Schools does authorize and operate an online school, a cyber school, if you will. We have approximately 150 students who are enrolled in that school. We take those revenues, and we invest those revenues to provide a quality educational experience for students within that format. Certainly, it's different than the schooling that I experienced as a K-12 participant in a neighborhood brick-and-mortar educational program. But we are proud of the fact that we're graduating students, some of whom, who may not otherwise have graduated, because for them, that's a safe educational environment, and it enables them to engage and to realize success. Simultaneous to that, we invest in some of those additional funds to bring additional resources to our traditional brick-and-mortar students in the area of technology and other innovative programs. And so we see it as both an educational platform and as part of our business model. And I just thought, in the spirit of transparency, it was important that I acknowledge that we do authorize and run a cyber program in Harper Woods Schools.
Thank you so much. Representative Price, we've got a question from the audience, and I think because you're the education chair, you'd be appropriate to start the dialogue. The passage and signing of the every student succeeds... The Passage and Signing of the Every Student Succeeds Act, how will that impact education in Michigan? As you all are aware, recently, the United States Congress passed, and President Obama signed a reauthorization of the Elementary and Secondary Education Act called the Every Student Succeeds Act. How will that affect Michigan? As the House Education Chair, what are you looking at doing in response to that as it relates to legislation?
Well, first of all, I'll say, I appreciate the more flexibility and less federal involvement that this new act has given states. I would like to see more stepping back by the federal government into education, because I think it has placed a lot of burden on our school districts for just complying with a number of reporting and dollars. But I think it, in general, says to our states that you really are the place where education happens. The federal government is not in control of that. And I think, little by little, as this wave comes back, the states will be returned to having more control over education.
All right, so more autonomy to the states. Brian Wiston, do you think that school districts will be able to have more autonomy with this new law?
Absolutely. I think we're all very excited about the opportunities for us in the room and educators, legislators, the Department of Ed, to really have more say in the direction of education, how we're gonna hold our students accountable, by what measures. As Gary had said, we're talking about changing the assessment system into a system that looks at growth. As a teacher, I always said, grade me by where I got the student and where did I leave the student after a year. So I think, as Representative Price said, this is a wonderful opportunity for us to control what takes place and not the federal government.
Absolutely, thank you. Let's go on to, and talk about Detroit Public Schools. I'm gonna ask the question again, let's be respectful. When we look at what has happened as it relates to the teachers in Detroit Public Schools, we have teachers who are teaching students in oversized classrooms, we have teachers who are teaching in subpar conditions. We've seen and witnessed with our own eyes, classrooms with mold the size of mushrooms. We've seen bed bug infestations and rodents. We've seen recently on the news, schools with no heat. You know, now we have the emergency manager who's removed security officers from the school, but he drives around with several security guards. You know, in light of what the teachers did today, and I totally stand 150% behind the teachers. You know, teaching is one of the professions that we don't give them as much credit and do that we should. You know, they're responsible for educating our future. In light of what the teachers did today, what is it gonna take to get some state involvement? What commitment do you make as the state superintendent, Mr. Wiston, to addressing the problems that we're dealing with in Detroit Public Schools? And let me, let me say this also, it's DPS today, it's another school district tomorrow.
Yeah, clearly, we want teachers to be able to teach in settings all over the state that are appropriate. And if there are facility issues, or rodent issues, or heat issues, you know, they need to be addressed. And I have called on the school district, the Department of Health in Wayne County and the city of Detroit, to look at these issues so that they can be addressed. I do have a meeting that's been scheduled to raise these issues with the emergency manager. Obviously, we want them addressed, but I wanna also make it clear, we need to be in the classrooms. Education for these kids is the one thing that can make a difference in their lives because of the great job educators are doing. Kids missing even five or 10 days of school can matter significantly in how they perform. So I appreciate teachers bringing up the issues, and we need to address these concerns, but we also need to have our teachers in our schools. For a lot of these kids, this is the only meal they got, would get in a day, and they didn't get it today. So, so we need to have teachers in the schools.
So, excuse me, so...
Don't put words in my mouth, I would never put words in yours.
We're not, no, 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 we're not, excuse me, what we're not gonna do here, we're not gonna, we're not gonna do, we're not gonna do that here. We're not, excuse me, we're not gonna do that here. Okay, thank you. We're not gonna do it here. As I was saying, I do wanna acknowledge Detroit School Board member, Ms. Redmond is here, let's acknowledge her. I think I saw her. In addition to poor working conditions, we have teachers in Detroit Public Schools who've been at step one since they started in the district. 10 years, 12 years, 14 years. In addition to that, the teachers in Detroit Public Schools gave back over $10,000 out of their paycheck. They took, they, about $10,000 out of their paychecks, and were promised they were gonna be given that back. It's been year after year, and we have teachers with master's degrees who've been teaching in Detroit Public Schools for, and I'll use one as example, 21 years, who does not make Unacceptable. With the rise of health costs, healthcare, that the teachers are now paying, what are we gonna do as a state to address the problem, especially if we want to attract and retain good talent to teach our kids? So I'm gonna start with Representative Price, and I'm gonna ask two minutes. Representative Price, I'm going to, start with Representative Price.
I'm sorry, I don't have an answer to that. This, to me, is, I mean, you're setting salaries at a, at a local level, and I, as Chair of the Education Committee, really don't get into that level of oversight of a local unit of government or a local school district. And, and it is very low, and I agree with you, and I wish that there was something we could do, but that is not within the purview of what I'm tasked to do.
Thank you. Christine, as a teacher here in Gross Point, do, and what I need is, if you have questions, get them to us quickly, 'cause we're gonna wrap up. As a teacher in Gross Point, charged with the duty of educating our kids, do you think teachers should have to sacrifice their salary to a school district? Do you think they should have to incur increased healthcare coverage? And work under pork, working conditions, all while educating our kids? Do you think it's fair?
I think probably every teacher in Michigan has taken some pay cuts in one form or another. We did go through rough economic times, and teachers are nothing if not willing to pitch in. However, there's a difference between pitching in and being abused.
Yes.
And I, as a teacher and as a representative of the Gross Point Education Association, stand in solidarity with the DPS teachers. It's too bad it had to come to this, but they're finally getting some attention, and I'm happy for that, and I hope to see this solved.
Here's a question from the audience, it says, "I am a Gross Point parent and a Detroit Public School teacher. Why is it okay to allow 48 students in a second-grade classroom in Detroit and have no prep time, not enough books? Basically, why are these, why do you think these things are allowed in Detroit and not other districts?" It would, it would, well, let's go down the road.
Quickly.
What do you think? Why do you think these kind of conditions are allowed to exist in Detroit? Dan?
You're asking a district-level question.
Well, no, it's a state-level question.
It's a state-level question.
It's a high...
Is it acceptable? Are we serving those students well? Are we serving those families or neighborhoods or the professionals in the Detroit Public School System well by that? No, absolutely not. Who's in charge of making those decisions? That's not my decision, so...
Well, I mean, from the perspective that we're all connected, one thing that impacts one district impacts all of us from that perspective. We all have a stake in what happens, whether it happens in Pontiac, or, you know, Cadillac, or Detroit, you know, the education of our children and the conditions impact us. So, from that perspective, yes or no?
Yes or no? Yes or no? Yes or no what? I'm sorry.
Do you, do you...
Ask the question again.
Do you accept that? Do you think it's cool?
It's not a good thing, no. We have to do better by our kids.
Thanks. Gary?
The answer is obviously no, but I also believe that we have to go back, and Brian brought it up, and I know it, and the legislators know it. We have, we have a school funding dollars laid out for professionals to come in and assess what's needed in each district across the state. And if we're underfunded in Detroit, or we're underfunded someplace else, we have to find a way in this state to be able to bring the needs of what we need inside these districts into what we, what we need inside the districts to make it happen. And the only people that can do that is the legislature. We are on a rebound in Michigan, we're on a rebound in Detroit. There's economic times that we haven't seen for quite some time. Some time or another, we get, we need to get the payback into the school district, into the education system, so that we can do the things that we need to do. 48 in a classroom, you know, that's two classrooms in most districts. And it needs to happen across the state, not just in, in one place or the other, across the state. And I think that this new funding advisory that we're going to get in early April should lead the legislature to some conclusion that we have deficiencies across the state at all levels.
Jerry?
Huge deficiencies. So if you look at the funding, just to go back to Dan, DPS, we get $7,434 per student. And 20% of that, $1,469, is going towards MIPSers. Charter schools get $7,391, about $59 go towards MIPSers. DPS pays $670 out of their per-people allocation for transportation. Charter is 131. DPS pays $1,093 for long-term debt service. Charter schools pay 114. And I could rattle off a few more numbers. But when it get down to it, you get $4,188 that go into the classroom in DPS. For charters, you get $6,581. And so if we don't understand, because of term limits with our current legislature, it seems as though sometimes we pit our districts against each other. And so I would like to see what Superintendent Wiston talked about, is all stakeholders coming together to really come up with some solutions that address this crisis that was created under state control. Because if we don't address the $550 million, $750 million, if you wanna add on a 200 additional million to start a new district, it's gonna be 3.5 billion that will cost and create additional impact on districts throughout the state of Michigan. So you either do it on the front end and address the debt that's been created by the state, or you do it on the back end. It's gonna be much more impactful to districts throughout the state. And so that's why education is a priority. That's why addressing this deficit for Detroit right now is a priority. That's why getting school aid funding right for all of our districts around the state and stop making it just Detroit versus everywhere else. And to hear legislators say that they don't think that this is a priority, if we go to the federal level, they're gonna find out just how much a priority it is. And so we can't get fair and adequate, adequate pay because of the debt that's been created by the state and the millions, or thousands, I should say, of consultants that have come in to continue to suck up the dollars that come into our district.
Brian, 48 books, 48 kids in a classroom?
48 kids in a class is not acceptable in any school district around the state. I have been on record for months saying that we need to take care of the Detroit deficit so that more money can get into the classroom. You know, in Lansing today, I listened to an ad on the radio, and it said, so-and-so truck company delivers to every McDonald's in the state, and we're paying our truck diarrhea for $63,000 a year. I think our teachers who are delivering our futures deserve more than that.
Todd, when you, when you hear about 48 students in a classroom in your neighboring school district, is that acceptable?
I don't know how a teacher's gonna succeed under those conditions. I don't know how children are gonna succeed under those conditions. Teaching is, teaching is, it is, it is a tremendous profession, and here's the reality. We didn't all, you know, there's a lot of educators in the room. We didn't all go to the same college or university, but we went to a similar college and university. And those tuition costs weren't all exactly the same, but they were at least comparable. And the educational program may not have been exactly to the same standards and underneath the same processes, but again, at least it was comparable. And that should be the standard in every school district across our state. Every child should be receiving a comparable, quality, well-rounded, multifaceted education, and every professional who works in the teaching profession, similarly, should have a similar level of compensation, one that opens the pathway to an upper-class middle school existence for them and their family. That's why they made that sacrifice. That's why they made that investment to go to college and to engage in just, I mean, a tremendous profession, to be a teacher. And for professionals, year after year after year, to see their buying power negated because of economic factors beyond their control, that's why we have a teacher shortage in the state, and it is a significant one. How are high-quality education, why are high-quality education candidates gonna aspire to enter this profession, given the economic circumstances that surround it currently as a profession and as the economic engine on which one can sustain and provide for their family? It is far less than ideal.
Amanda, as a, as a state representative, you hear 48 kids in a classroom?
It's not acceptable. And I will bring to you the perspective from my side of the state and outstate that when we look at what we're going to do around DPS's debt, I believe we're all very concerned about it. However, we also have lots of superintendents, and sorry, but I'll say this out loud, I think superintendents, when they get their PhD, must take a class in how to complain to the legislature, because every single one of them believes that they need every single dollar they get for their kids. So it is imperative that we address this situation and address it quickly, but it is going to be very difficult, because not only do we have what the governor's proposed with the $715 million, we have some budget constraints coming in the coming year on a fiscal basis that we did not foresee, and so it will be difficult. But 48 kids in any classroom, anywhere, is not acceptable. I want a good quality education across the state for every kid.
Christine, you teach in Gross Point, but you have, I'm sure, friends that teach in Detroit. When you hear 48 kids, is that acceptable?
No, of course not, and of course, it comes from a lack of funding. Michigan finds itself without funds partly because of the Michigan business tax cuts that took place a few years ago. So complaining that superintendents want money to fund their districts and saying they don't have the money when we know where the money went, not sure that's the answer.
Well, we see the Detroit teachers trying to raise the issue in various, various kind of ways. I'll just start and go down. Do you support the efforts of the Detroit Public School teachers and what they're trying to do to raise the issue? Christine, and we'll just come back, yes or no?
Yes, I do.
Amanda?
I do not. I mean, I, it's not professional, you're not setting a good example. You didn't, you signed a contract to do a job, and I believe you need to be in the classroom for the kids.
Todd, teachers are trying to raise the issue. I know you're superintendent, but does your heart go out to them?
I think they've gotta be heard. I am former DFT. Yes, it was a long time ago, but I have colleagues who still work there. You know, the state takeover has not created the intended solution, and, you know, I commend their activism, and I think it's a difficult choice, and I'd hate to see any school close for more than one day, but I think that the conversation is greater surrounding the issue because of citizens engaging in the democratic process, they're standing up for their personal and professional rights. I support them.
Brian, you're the, you're the state superintendent, I'm sure you've got a party line to say, but you're an educator as well?
I don't have a party line, I have what I believe is right in my heart. And what I believe in right is, in my heart, is that we are in school educating kids. Now, with that said, if there are issues that need to be addressed, I wanna be at the table, and I want them addressed. And I want the city of Detroit and the Health Department looking at the schools to see if there are problems, and I want the city to address it. But do I support closed schools? No, I don't. I support kids in schools getting an education.
I guess the question is, is that the, with no school board, in no way, I mean, how are the teachers supposed to be heard? They don't have anybody to complain to.
Well, I think David Hacker and the... Well, I, I think David Hecker and the leadership of the union are making us aware of the issues and problems, and I'm, I'm, I want to be part of the resolution.
Brian doesn't support them. Sherry, do you support the teachers?
I just want to say to you, thank you. I think you're a breath of fresh air in what I've been hearing so far. I appreciate your statement and press release that came out earlier, calling for, to address the conditions that have been reported by the teachers, but they've been reported for far too long. In 2006, we were saying this same thing, we had a sick-out, and I was part of one of the organizers then. And so I am honored and happy to stand with my colleagues today from DFT and any other time that they raise their voice, because they have been silent for too long. Many of them want to teach, want to give our children a fighting chance, but they realize, we realize, that just like doctors taking oath, teachers taking oath to do or to allow no harm. And what's been done to our children for all these years has caused irreparable harm. And someone has to be accountable for it. We cannot allow children with asthma to sit in buildings with black mold, with leaking ceilings, with inoperable plumbing, with no hot water, with no heat. We have been silent for too long. And if this is what it takes to get this, to make this a national issue, because education is a civil rights and human rights issue, and if it takes shining a light on Michigan to show that we will go to any limb to shut out democracy and allow children in urban centers to go through this treatment, hell yeah, I support our teachers standing up for their rights.
Gary, not to put you on the hot seat, but...
I absolutely, totally agree with Brian's idea that we bring resolution, and I think the sides need to be heard, so therefore I think they have created a venue in the press and within the confines to be able to draw attention. Now, what do they do with that attention? What do we do with that attention across the state? I think we, I think we bring those parties together and listen and try to find solutions, and that's really what this is all about, trying to find what's best for kids in, in all, all schools across the state.
Please.
Thank you.
Thank you, Brian, thank you, Gary. Do you support the teachers? Dan?
I think their concerns have to be heard. I share the concern, though, that closing schools and making, you know, pushing kids out of their instructional time is not the way to do that, there needs to be other ways to make sure they're being voiced and heard.
And on that note, we, Sherry brought up that this was an educational crisis that is occurring. The person that's in charge of Detroit Public Schools, coincidentally, happens to be the same person who was the emergency manager for Flint that implemented the water plan, and we saw that emergency. Let me ask you, as professional educators and people who watch it, are you concerned that the same person who was the emergency manager for Flint, and we saw that debacle happen, is now the emergency manager for DPS? Or, and a non-educator? Christine?
Yes, of course I'm concerned. One of the big concerns I have with the emergency manager, EAA, DPS issues, is that these people seem to cycle through. They are never around more than a year or two. They get a big salary for a couple of years, and then they resign, or they quit, or they go somewhere else, and they take a severance with them. Darnell Early has lifetime health benefits from his position in Flint, so I'm concerned that there's really almost no accountability for these people, and this pattern just continues.
Amanda, you're a state representative, the emergency manager for Flint, a non-educator who's in charge of DPS. Given what's happened in Flint, are you concerned at all about his handling of DPS?
Well, I, I look at it from two different perspectives. So there have been a number of emergency managers in local units of government, and I think for the most part, and I will say for the most part, they have been quite successful in helping the city that's turning around.
Just focus on me, Amanda. Are you, are you concerned that the emergency manager for Flint is, is in charge of DPS?
And, and I will say this, too. I think the skill set for an emergency manager is very limited in terms of their qualifications. They're very highly, they're very highly educated, they...
I know.
I'm sorry, it's very distracting, but, so I think they have, there aren't a lot of people out there that can do this, and so moving them, I, I think the governor has a limited source of people that are highly qualified to do this, and he, in his judgment, saw this person as the best fit.
Well, he saw that before the Flint disaster, so, given that Flint is in a state of emergency, given the big national embarrassment that was called, do you think, do you still have confidence in this emergency manager, the same one that is responsible for implementing the switch that has caused a national embarrassment, health crisis, kids are being poisoned? Do you still have confidence in it?
I'm not going to, well, it seems like somewhat of a loaded question, because now you're asking me to put blame on a situation with one person.
Well, no, this is widely reported. He was the emergency manager in Flint, the decision had been made to switch, we've seen the governor apologize, we've seen him let go of people, everybody's, but I don't think that most people know that the same guy that's responsible had a hand in Flint is now in charge of DPS. Does it give you pause?
I don't, I think he's a qualified person to do this job.
So the answer is no, okay. Todd, not an educator? Does it give you pause?
I don't have any insights relative to the circumstance in Flint. Certainly, it's highly concerning, but I will say that, you know, a school is, is a governmental facility, and if a roof leaks, it should be fixed, and fixed on a timely basis. And if a school isn't performing well academically, then, you know, obviously that has to be of the highest priority, and I do think that a person with an educational background has some advantages in that regard.
Right, so you would like to see an educator. Brian, does it give you pause?
Yes and no. I don't, I don't know what decisions or who, who made those decisions in Flint. I'd like to see an elected school board and have them appoint their own leader.
Gotcha. Sherry, does it give you pause?
It causes grave concern, but not only does Darnell Early, who was the emergency manager in Flint, cause grave concern, the, the way that PA 436 is structured and has allowed a perpetual, ongoing insertion of emergency managers over our school district, that's what gives me grave concerns for consecutive emergency managers. And when Detroit was going through its bankruptcy, the governor's team went on record indicating that this wasn't the intent of the emergency manager law. So, yes, that gives me grave concern, but what gives me grave concern more so is how many emergency managers are we going to allow? I, I push back on, on, on Red Price's notion that they're these highly, highly qualified people, because all they've done is increase the deficit. So I don't know what you're highly qualified to do to dismantle Detroit Public Schools and urban centers, because certainly, none of them have fixed anything, not one thing, in Detroit Public Schools since they've been over the district. Each one has increased the deficit, so they obviously can't count. And so I don't know how skilled they are to be over our schools, and they're not academic leaders, so that's a problem. But they were brought there because they were numbers people, and they were yes-men.
Thank you.
Unfortunately, we're out of time.
So, so let me say this, we have about 12 more questions I'm going to ask quickly. If the panelists would commit, my office will send the questions. If you will commit to get us your answers back in a week.
Absolutely.
Rep, Christine Geer, Red Price, Todd, Brian?
Yes.
So if you signed in on the sign-in sheet, you will get emailed the answers, their responses to the questions. So you've heard them verbally commit that they're going to respond within seven days. So I appreciate them, but let's do this. This is the first time we've had a panel of this diversity.
Oh, sure.
And so I think we need to stand up and give, whether you agree with something that was said or disagree, we need to give a round of applause for those who have taken time to come and express their concerns and share their views about education. I sincerely appreciate my colleague from Holland, Representative Amanda Price, for driving down. I owe her dinner tonight or something for coming down, you know, to show our gratitude, and to all the panelists, I thank you. Thank you to the teachers and everything that you do. Thank you to the school board members. But this is just part one. Part two, state of the edu... Crystal Bonner, you owe me $20 for keep talking out in my meeting. All right, don't say nothing else until you leave. Go out the door, don't open your mouth.
Don't do her like that.
That's a constituent and a teacher, I can do that. Thank you all, have a good night. We have a school board meeting, and we need to clear out, but we want to get a picture with the panel. Can we come in front? Please, right in front. My staff is moving quickly, and thank you to my staff. See Judge Elanese Bryant Weeks in the, in the lobby? She has something. Judge Elanese Bryant Weeks, if the panelists would come up front, take pictures. Steve Hood, are you still here? And then Steve Hood wants to ask a couple of questions to some of the panelists. So thank you all, all the panelists, come up front, please.